The most common time that you can help somebody is when they're down. And there are a lot of people that are down because they're at the end roads and they don't know where to turn. That when people come into any of our branch locations, that you outreach your arms and you help them. And you see what their problems are. I think that's what we brought to this industry, I think that's what we brought to this community, that we try to outreach to the people that need us the most and we're here to help serve them.
It's obviously a very difficult thing to challenge. The formula is set by statute, goes back to the Education Reform Act of ninety-three. So, he said, when I was talking to him about what we're thinking about doing in terms of organizing communities that were like-minded like us, going through certain challenges. He suggested we start with Wester County first. Says you're not going to have a lot of support inside the 495 belt. A lot of those towns are having no problem meeting minimum contribution rates, having no problem funding additional local, you know, when you talk about the Sudbury's and the Lincolns and the Nuxton's and the Ockens. He said that it seems like the primary ones, towns and schools that are having challenges tend to be Wester County just because the demographics aren't there, income is not there. Education is based on income in the state. It's based on what your town can afford and what your town is willing to afford for education. So, this is a list of the districts in Wester County. At the top is those fourteen regional school districts. There's four other ones in the middle that I put of note. Those are ones that have been in the paper lately in terms of having overrides and difficulties with funding their school budgets. And then the bottom ones are the remaining districts in the, single-town districts in Wester County, some of which may not be having an issue such as Westboro or Harvard, but there may be other ones that are challenged like us. So, these would be the towns and the districts that I would focus on. I did a draft letter. If you'd like to read it or summarize it, it's a, what's the, I don't know if you've seen this tonight, but I can go through it in depth. But basically, what I tried to do was talk about three different education legislation, statutory requirements or mandates that are impacting us. I know there are other ones that impact individual districts themselves in terms of a common core and different requirements that they have in terms of different levels of funding and staffing and programs that they have to offer. But in terms of the ones that are impacting us, obviously the Chapter Seventy, which is the funding requirement by municipalities for their school. It sets foundational levels, it sets net school spending levels for us, you know, local contribution levels. And as everyone knows, you know, we're kind of dealing with a double hit. One is the state is working to lessen their burden and then shift that burden which to the towns. And on top of that, things go up annually anyway. As you can see, the second paragraph, I talked about how the per pupil over the last ten years has gone from about seven thousand to ten thousand dollars. In that same period of time, the Chapter Seventy allotted amount has decreased by ten percent from seventy-eight percent to sixty-eight percent. The other piece of legislation that is impacting us is the Chapter Seventy-one, Sixty-B, which was the, when we stepped the regional school district legislation, the statutes, we tied to the possibility of a special part of education coming in on December first and setting a mandated budget if you have not met, or your towns have not adopted a budget. So, we saw that last year where, you know, as we were talking about normal years, it did with a two percent increase, a four percent increase in requests last year. When the state came in, they assessed us a nine percent increase, which was definitely less than the thirty-five percent they started with in the last May. However, that was still seven hundred thousand dollars higher for us. That's a huge part of our eight million dollar budget. Third piece of legislation is the Chapter Seventy-four, out of district, non-resident vocational students. And you can see a projection for next year, two thousand and fifteen, is about a hundred, almost a hundred and forty thousand dollars for just five students. So, those are the three I mentioned. Talk about the bottom paragraph, the fourth paragraph on the first page talks about the impact of town services, examples of what we're dealing with. And then, in the last couple paragraphs, I close with, you know, if you're experiencing some similar challenges, please provide, you know, please email me, provide me some contact information, and then we'll try and organize at a future point and get together and we can at least brainstorm about next steps. One of the things I've been thinking about is there's a couple of different organizations or consultants out there that provide consulting services to municipalities. One is the Abraham's Group, and what they do is they do actually classes for selectmen and municipal officials on Chapter Seventy formula. And so, they might be someone that we would ask to come in and if we had a fee, great. If we could employ them, that'd even better. And have them come in, maybe that's imposing that we talked about, and have them come in and talk about the formula and really get a handle on that in terms of, you know, this trend is not going away. It's, you know, the state of education has a trend that they've set in terms of how they factor their minimum local contribution levels, and the impact to us has been obviously great. We're not able to increase the tax level, we need those obligations. And one other thing to do, and that's reduce expenses on the general government side. And that's what we've been facing and that's what we're about to go through in FY fifteen. We could have further impacts later in FY fifteen from that. And obviously, if it continues again in FY sixteen, then who knows when? So, how do you answer your questions or just have general comment? And if you're happy with the letter, I can send it out to those districts, those towns. I can do chairman's of the selectmen and town managers and administrators, I know, and start generating some contacts in Wester County. And then, if there may be an opportunity to expand after that.
Just from my perspective, I'd like to see you address these to the chairman and the town managers. That's just my opinion.
How many agree with Mr. Pathey? I think that that's where the real issues begin. At least get some line of communication open. Because I don't fear, you know, I don't think really only town out of three hundred and fifty-one that are facing this issue. There are strengths in numbers.
Mr. Chair, the other thing that I, I've been around the political scene long enough to know the best routes to go here, but it seems to me that we need to bring our state reps on board as well. And I didn't know, in our previous discussion, I don't know if we talked about, you know, listing them. I feel like at the very least, they should be copied on this. And maybe with, you know, with a cover letter so that they know what we're up to. Because if we're going to proceed anywhere in the direction of legislation, I know that, you know, our local delegation is oftentimes overwhelmed by the numbers in Boston. But I feel like we've got to, we have to go forward as a group here. And we certainly would want to surprise them, you know, once with, you know, with any kind of consensus we arrived at. I feel like they need to be part of this, at least be brought into it.
Yeah, and I agree with you, John. I think maybe you should have, say, tell these districts to feel free to forward this letter to their delegations.
Well, I got, my thought is, I mean, I get the list available.
If you want to do it.
The state reps and centers representing all of these towns, I could just CC them.
If you want to be able to do that, that's fine.
And I could just write in the letter CC all of the list of them. Write fifteen to twenty people.
Yeah, I mean, again, what upset me recently was, in one of the documents you shared was a while back, where towns in our situation last year, when we got hit with that number so late in the year, and how the state does not consider that an unfounded mandate, I don't know. I mean, it's, as far as I'm concerned, it was an unfounded mandate late in the year. Then we had no way of moving on. Again, this is just to organize, see other towns where they stand. And Indiana, if we can make some noise up to Beacon Hill, that'd be, that'd be great. Any other questions?
And just a final comment, Mr. Chair. I think it's just good for the voters, residents to know that we, we're not just going to sit here and complain to ourselves about the situation. We haven't reached a point where we're talking about cost or litigation. I think at the very least, we need to enlarge the discussion and see what response of other towns. I just think it's a, I don't see it taking up a lot of energy at this point. But I think we, the frustrations we felt, we may be among the first to be, you know, see our districts in the headlines as much as we have, but it's, these other towns, you're surely, you can see what's coming. So, I think that makes sense. Everybody knows, everybody knows it's a live discussion.
Absolutely. Mr. Administrator, when we, when we expect these letters going out?
Either at the end of this week or the first of next week. And I'll just keep you updated in terms of, I'll put together a contact list and just provide that in your packet over the next couple of weeks and just see what we get for returns.
We all set on that item? Okay, great. Next item under old business is the town hall. What, Mr. Administrator?
Just letting you know that Mr. Fritz and I have been working with Seaman Engineering out of Auburn, which is a design engineer for this type of work, HVAC type work. And just letting you know, we did receive a proposal, however, we have questions on it. So, what I'd like to do is, with the direction of the board, if they're okay, is have Mr. Fritz and I sit down with Mr. Seaman and discuss the scope of services and the price to make sure that we're comfortable with it and go from there and report back at the next meeting.
It's what's on the board, I have no issue with it.
I have no issue. I think we should, I think we got to narrow this down to between the district rights, actually.
Yeah, we want to keep moving forward, obviously, to address the efficiencies that we have here. Just kind of letting you know by giving you this that there's a, we're going through that process. It's times it can be tedious at times, you're going back and forth and working around other work that they have. And these tend to be specialty engineering services, you know, getting quotes and things that are sometimes challenging. So, we'll at least work on it. We'll meet with Kevin and go from there.
No need to official motion, do you?
No need to official motion, just more of like an informational type thing. So, at some point, you will have formal action to take in terms of moving forward in contract with engineering. Obviously, you'll have to put out the paperwork and everything.
Mr. Chair, just a question. If we had a business relationship proceeding in the past?
The only relationship we've had is through discussions with Kaffee Kane, Kane Associates, which was the architect for the town hall project. So, actually, working with Kaffee, she suggested why, when we had these issues here at the town hall, actually going back, Kevin Seaman would be nearby, you know, specializes in this kind of work. It would be a good fit. So, but I think at the end of the day, you know, just like any contract, we need to be comfortable with the services that we're getting and the fee as well.
So, this establishes some parameters and then you can go out, you have an RFP?
Sure.
Okay. That's good. I, you know, it's interesting, all of the specialty engineering companies.
But when you change your joint from steam to hot water, it isn't just, you know, showing the boiler and you're going to change, all this stuff here is going to be changed. This is going to be ripped up, then we're going to zone it. So, we don't heat the whole town hall, we get one service upstairs, it's the whole town hall. And we bring about a thousand gallons every two weeks. So, we bring the gas bill way, way down.
All right, good luck with that. Any other questions? Great, good luck. All right, Town Administrator Report, Discussion, Health Insurance Opt-Out Program.
As some of you may recall, we enacted or reenacted a program that was instituted about a decade ago. Probably again at a period of time where there was financial difficulties, where we instituted a program that allowed for people who were already enrolled in the health insurance program, if they opted out of the program, meaning that they went with a different carrier outside or different program, or they opted for to join their spouse's program through that person's work, we'd actually provide them a payout to essentially, no, to keep them off, but essentially an incentive for having, have them switch. You know, maybe it's enough for them in thinking, considering of all things being equal, considering another plan, you know, when you're looking at spending ten thousand, fifteen thousand dollars a plan, depending on individual family, versus a one or two thousand dollar cost of having that person opt out, I don't see why we don't do this every year. So, that's why I brought it up. We have actually our benefits fair for employees starting next week. I think it's Wednesday the fourth. And I would like to see the board reenact this policy, but make it a permanent one. Again, so what happens is if you're on it and you're an individual, starting July first, we would take you off the plan. There'd be savings for the town, net savings, you know, approximately, you know, six, seven thousand dollars for an individual and almost twice that for a family. We make that payment, but obviously, there's a positive or a net impact on our health insurance line. And I think, you know, we probably had sixty to seventy-five people enrolled. And I think last time when we did this, a year ago, we only had one person opt for it, but that's still something, right? And so, I don't know why we wouldn't do it every year. I can't really think of a negative to it. You know, the employee has to stay off for two years to get paid for those two years, and that's it.
Taking a sample, that one sample size, that one individual, again, what was the, our cost versus what we saved?
Well, what I'd say is if you're looking at, let's just say for rough numbers, a family plan is twenty thousand dollars a year, and a town is paying sixty percent, it's twelve thousand, correct? So, and then two thousand dollars, we're actually having net savings of ten thousand bucks.
I think it's a great, I think it's a great thing to offer, you know. In the regular world, in the private sector, I got hit with a seven hundred dollar surcharge because I was insuring my wife, who had health insurance at her disposal, right? So, they only did off of this incentive, maybe just out of the case in the private sector, so.
I've seen it before in the private sector, offered like a five hundred dollar incentive. So, that's just one company I worked at. So, but again, I think it coincides with the benefits fares coming up next week. The board's in favor of it. Keep in mind, the policy, policy and policies is that we can't adopt this until the next meeting. You can't introduce and adopt at the same time. So, I'm introducing it tonight, and what I was asked is that we adopt it at the first meeting in June, which I think is June ninth. So, but at least if there's kind of a, but more than the board, there's a consensus to move forward with it. I can at least provide it as an informational piece at the benefits fair next week, that this is, this is again resurfacing. And if you'd like to opt for it, when you guys adopt it on the night, the employees have that option.
If you have an idea, this makes perfect sense to institute and not just bring it in now. I think it's a good policy and I think it makes sense for those who want to take advantage of it. I think it makes very good sense for the towns to adopt. That's my opinion, and I would definitely say for the board.
Yeah, in my opinion, I think we should move forward with the same reasons. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, just one question. How did we arrive at the one thousand, two thousand dollar?
I guess it's kind of an industry norm, you know? And other than the other things you want to provide, enough of an incentive, people were reattracted, people, but obviously, you're not going to do so much that you're going to, you know, make it not beneficial for the town to come to budget standpoint, so.
My only thought was that the savings of the town is quite substantial. Is there, could we make it a stronger incentive? Is that just, is it good, it will align with the?
It's debatable. The number's debatable. I mean, it's certainly up for discussion if you want.
Have you heard any feedback, Mr. Administrator, that someone would take it if they were offered fifteen hundred dollars or?
I think the numbers make perfect sense. I know coming from the private sector is.
I think it's slightly more than private sector. The number I've seen has been five hundred for families, so you're almost four times up for a family, so.
I mean, I think that.
I don't know how to respond to that.
Yeah, that or a surcharge, like I'm sure. I'm just looking for some perspective on that.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point, John.
I mean, I guess if we can, if we can, since we're flexible on this, we can fix it next cycle if we have to. So, I'm in favor, as it's like a woodbury, is to move forward with the numbers as they are and see how, see how it works out.
There's no reason not to.
So, I'll put it back on the agenda for June ninth, the adoption. Great. Next item we report is the meeting schedule.
So, I did put together a letter for the board and I hope the board appreciates my personal situation. You know, obviously, we have set meeting nights, on Monday nights, we have for some time. As the board knows, I've been working on a second master's degree at Clark University for master's public administration. I've taken nine of twelve classes. I have one more scheduled at the end of the summer, one in the fall. And then I have a project which is not related to a night class. So, it would be an issue come January. But for, I think it's, looking at Brenda's revised schedule, there will be one meeting, I'm sorry, two meetings in July fifteenth and the twenty-second. And then in addition to that, starting in September, when I take a normal class in the fall, there will be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven nights in which I would have a conflict with a class. I've held off as long as I could. I've been enrolled in this program for three years now, in four. The only nights they offered is Monday nights, and it's their core requirements. They're part of, you know, they're not, there's no other option for me but to take these in order to graduate, so. So, respectfully request a shift in the nights for those evenings, again, beginning in mid-July and expiring in the beginning of December. It'll be temporarily only. Tuesday night is not a night that is workable for the board. I am certainly, I think we, you know, some board members mentioned that Wednesday may be a better alternative. You know, that's up for discussion. Obviously, we'd have to post it and change our website. We could post it on the board, do an SCA notice. And then obviously, we'll let SCA notice, notify them. And also, the finance committee, I know Mary's been, talked about this before, we have to change this stuff tonight. She, you know, we meet once a month, and obviously, sometimes you talk more than that, but hopefully, give some flexibility. And if there's a night that I couldn't make it, you had to meet on that night, and I'd try to, try to board as best as possible.
Mr. Chairman, I think it behooves us to support the administrator in continuing his education. I think that was probably the goal for us, high of. My only issue is, and I don't care if there are Tuesdays that don't work for me, I can really have to run a dealership, as Mary knows. Thursdays are tough enough for me, but if Wednesday works, I can do Wednesdays.
Okay, great. The first Wednesday of each month, I never wanted that.
We don't meet the first Wednesday of the month, so it worked out.
Okay, we're all set then. I'm okay with Wednesday as well, so. If you can amend this schedule to be Wednesday, we, we, we can, Brenda and I can work on that. And then we'll put it in the package list meeting and make all the corporate notifications. We just need a formal board report to do that.
So, that way we don't run into Monday holidays either.
So, this will be the normal meeting?
I think, you know, and again, I think we're very fortunate to all the tough times we've been through to have you by our side, to, to, to support that. So, that being said, I would take a motion to change our meeting schedule. We ought to work on the calendar.
Yeah, we'll work on games, but we'll go with Wednesdays for the next several months, starting in July.
So, it's July to December.
I just made my motion.
Wednesday at six?
Six o'clock.
I have a motion?
A second.
A second, and you have discussion?
Just a final question. That would mean starting in, starting July sixteen? Starting in July, but we will, Mondays are, we will not be meeting on Monday. So, I have a class to sign up for that I'll be teaching. And I was originally thinking Tuesday, but I'm glad nothing is, hasn't been yet, so that keeps Monday open.
Okay, great. I just want to thank the board, appreciate that.
All right, so we had a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. So, the schedule's amended. But most importantly, gentlemen, does that infringe on your social calendar as well? To make sure that we're okay. You shouldn't ask you guys first, the heck of the rest of them. All right. All right, next item on the Town Minister Report, future agenda items.
So, on June ninth, I'll come back with, yes, the only thing I have, June ninth, coming back with the, um, with the opt-out program for formal adoption. Chief Parsons, you'd ask him to come in and discuss some of the fire department, or his fire department letter and the training and programs. I've had a meeting with him and understand it better, but I'm not going to speak for him. I'll have him come in, but he couldn't make it tonight because his son had a back, the baccalaureate situation.
Baccalaureate or whatever they call it.
So, he'll, I think he's going to come in on the ninth. And then, obviously, we'll be meeting discussing the next country's school, regional school district budget. I believe the next meeting is June tenth, which is a Tuesday, a second Tuesday in June. So, I respect that on June sixteenth, the first, on Monday after that, the board will have that in their hands to discuss. The thirty days' time schedule is essentially June thirteenth, so.
We have organizations such as the, the Aerocultural Association coming for future meetings. So, we'll contact them, let them know about meeting changes and.
Yeah, right, I mean, we'll go through our, usually, anyone that obviously wants to go through the agenda, the first call they usually make is our office and Brenda works with them on the schedule. So, any public hearings, legal licenses and all those types of things. So, it'll be a temporary transition for folks and, you know, try and work their best around it.
Great. Any questions on that? Anything else anyone wants to address at future agenda?
Mr. Chair, if I could just raise a general question. I think one thing that we, some of us were surprised with the way that the override went. And I think we did a good job communicating all the way through, you know, what our thinking was and what the choices were. And I know a lot of people, you know, watch this on cable. I would like to see if we could encourage more people to attend meetings, both of the board as well, as Mary can speak to this, but the finance committee as well. Because if truly the majority voters out there are saying by their vote that they're willing to forego certain town services, you know, for lower taxes, I would love to hear from them in person as we're deliberating the budget. And I guess it's a long way of saying, I think we are very flexible in our, in our format here. But the fact is, every item is not a public hearing. So, I know we have to exercise some control in order to move through the agenda and finish in reasonable time. But if more people felt that they could appear and speak on an issue when it's being brought up and not have to come in at citizen input or follow up in the beginning or follow up in citizen input later in the, later in the agenda when it's already been decided or the discussion is over, maybe we'd see more people coming. I would just like to hear from more people. I, I, that's what we need, especially with the choice that we've got. We need to know some people's minds. And if people knew they could come and look at, you know, I know we posted the agenda and they know that certain items are going to be discussed when it comes to budgets. So, we open up the floor, I guess, I don't know what you call it, it's not going to be a public hearing, but our willingness to entertain comments. And, you know, Mary, maybe Mary would like to speak to that in terms of, you know, getting input from the community as well. It's got to be a source of frustration for the finance committee as well to make all the decisions and then to find that, you know, the community's not behind you when we do really want to respond to, you know, the priorities and wishes of the voters. Mary, do you want to add?
While she's coming up, I'll just say, you know, pretty much every meeting we have is a public hearing. They advertise in the paper.
That's right.
It was on cable. You know, we, all of our meetings broadcast over and over. The only one that actually came up to, the service ones were not well attended. When we went through the services and the department, the only one that was well attended was the presentation on terms of what the impact of the override was. And I think that's because there was specifically the word override in the public hearing notes. Before that, it was all, you know, budget, services, the finance committee, they, we posted and advertised their budget hearing, it's a public hearing, it's a requirement. Town meeting is advertised in so many different places. And we had, you know, we did have two hundred and fifty people show up, but we had eight thousand registered voters in this community. So, I don't know, any great suggestions? I'm willing to listen in terms of how we change things moving forward, aside from going door to door and dragging people here. I don't know quite what direction we're going.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that we've had the same conversation at finance committee. And I wanted to note that, and I said it, I've said it more than one meeting, just for this budget. Finance committee had a public hearing. You had, did you have one or two public hearings?
Every service one meeting was a public hearing.
That's right.
I think it was four of them. And then we had the public hearing on the services one, I mean, on the presentation, so. There was at least five. And I think we had another one when we actually, the April seventh, the night we actually voted on the, I mean, this was. Sorry, we had five or six.
And school committee, and school committee had a public hearing as well. So, there was ample opportunity for people to come out and express themselves. And I think that the chairs at the time were more than generous about giving everyone time. But as Adam said, the perks of the manager is, what are we going to do? Go door to door, knock on the doors, say, "Come with me"? It is, it's very, very frustrating. So, I guess, again, thank you for letting me say this. It's a plea to the folks who watch, and we know they watch, because, having full, then power goes out. We get phone calls and they, "How come the cable's not on"? So, people are there watching. Even in the past couple of weeks, after the town meeting, I've had more than one person come up and say, "Oh, I could have made phone calls." Well, I didn't make phone calls. You know, I wish I knew. What can we do? And as a teacher, I say, we can teach and we can't learn. How do you get people out? And it is a, an ongoing problem with all the boards. I think folks have to accept the responsibility that coming to meetings is a nuisance. It takes time on your life. But if the issues are important to you, you have to accept that responsibility. So, you're, what, what are we going to do and how do we get people to? So, you're, what, what are we going to do and how do we get people to express their opinions here? Where everybody, where you folks can respond, where we can respond, instead of at the W N shop or at the towns or those kinds of things. And it's, and, and we, cable access have actually been talking too about how can we do, should we be doing something else?
I think, I think on, on that subject, maybe we should be leveraging you in different ways. Uh, you know, there was always talk last year about, you know, when the first Mrs. Cortino came in, we totally begged him to have a presentation on his first cut of the budget on cable and, and run over and over and over again, have a, have a live show to do it. Uh, maybe we, you know, I get nervous about opening up every meeting as a, as a free throw. Uh, but I, I, I'm saying, agree with your, with your comments. Maybe we have more public hearings outside the realms of our, of our vertical slot here, you know? Maybe we push these meetings out to somewhere else where we may get more of a, go to a, go to a senior center and have, and have a public hearing. Go, go to a school, high, high school and have a public hearing. Go to the library and have a public hearing. Maybe some, those are some of the tools that, that we could use and maybe change it up a bit. Um, other than that and leveraging, I mean, we've done our very best. We've been, we were open and transparent, and I hate using that term because at least we do, you're not.
Right.
But we were, we put everything out there that we thought was shit on the table.
And, and here, Adam did the informational, so you, you did the informational show about the, um, for the town meeting about the warrant and.
Oh, the moderator in the show?
Yeah.
Cause like they're in a good state of the mind.
That's right, you did a state of town.
We did, uh, you know, Adam and I spent time down the senior center trying to explain. I think you're right, maybe, maybe it's a show at the cable access where people can call in. They don't want to get out of the house, maybe at least they'll pick up the phone because it's important to everybody. And, and, and it's not going away.
And, and I discussed this with the administrator a while back, sometimes, you know, after, after the vote went down, I went to, I went to Adam and said, what, what can we do now? Let's have, let's have public meetings where we invite the folks who had issues and talk to them. But the thing is, some folks aren't going to want to come out and voice their, voice their dissent with a, with a, with a camera on, you know?
What I've heard is, I've heard two things. One is obviously the impact on people's personal income, right? That's number one.
Yeah.
And number two is, I keep hearing things about this in the school leadership. And I keep telling people, you know, that's, you need to go there, and you have issues there, you need to discuss them with them. Like, I sent an email today, and a gentleman was, you know, criticizing the town, and his focus again was on things that need to be done in the school department. And I don't know how to tell this to people enough, that we are a member of the regional school district. Um, there's a separate regional district, school committee, they are in charge of the budget. They can make, uh, kind of changes there, they can do budget adoptions there. We only say yes or no on the assessment, and that's it. Do you have an issue with the way things are being handled in the school system? Go there and, or email the superintendent, email the school committee, and please direct those questions and comments to them. Uh, obviously, we have room questions, and we try to do our due diligence, and we can sometimes relay certain messages. But if people are that passionate and upset about what's happened over the last couple of years, you need to go to those meetings. You need to express it to the school committee. Um, I, I understand that the, the, uh, the way people voted in the, um, in the election was certainly a clear sign of people, how they felt about, um, what's going on, what has been going on. And that's obviously been the biggest challenge for us, and we have to struggle to try and overcome, uh, that, and it's, and it's left us in a relatively difficult situation.
Um, the, and I will say, having gone, having been attending a lot of school committee meetings, attendance there is up. There are a lot of people who go to those school committee meetings over the year. I mean, have, some years, years ago, there'd just be the school committee, and like this one or two people. But they, they have great attendance, and some, some people speak up and some people don't. But the other issue is that people look at, um, the town of Lester or the town of North Brookfield and say, well, how come they can do such and such with their budget? And Adam's right, understanding the difference between a regional school, a regional school district and what powers towns have versus town school districts, it's a whole different, um, dynamic. So it's, it's, it's apples and oranges, and people don't always, um, it's, it's a tough concept sometimes to, to realize that we're in two different places. So when, um, talking about bringing in, um, organizing some of the other town, uh, towns and boards of selectmen, maybe that is a good educational piece as well, to bring in somebody to talk about chapter seventy, to explain the differences in the way that it's, um, affects towns and individual towns who have their districts in regional school district towns as well. It's a lot, um, you know, that, that might clear up some of the confusion.
Thank you for your input, Mary. Keep trying.
Yeah, you can do. Okay, it's, maybe just fundamentally, and I, I know, I know we tried a lot of different ways of saying this, but if, if people have ideas about the budget or feeling of the budget, then necessarily have to wait till we're conducting, you know, formal department reviews, that if anybody has a kind of a passion stand or some ideas to offer, that, that we would, that we, there's a way to accommodate them in, in every meeting.
And what I didn't mention also is that I, you know, I decided last week to start having my office hours again, and John's going to follow. If any of you guys want to join us on those office hours and sit, and we could beg people to come up to us, I think the last one was, was promoted pretty well. And we still only get, you know, two people to come by and make comments. But I think that's our, our job to be open to, for, uh, you know, to the public, so.
And, and, uh, to, to that point, so I was going to mention during, and, uh, with, with board member comments, you know, but, um, mine is set for June tenth, I believe, uh, right, Brenda? June, June tenth, seven to eight in, in the town hall, using the straighter's office. And again, it's, it's ideas, reflections on the budget, it's, 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 you know, particular issues of interest to you and your, and your, your residency, and anything that's on people's minds.
Great.
As I say, you might want to move your hours, that school committee meeting, that.
Right.
Right.
All right, Dave.
I think meeting six.
That's our six.
Yeah, so, uh, I'll, I'll have to call you for seven, you know, it's, it's up there now, I don't think I can really change it.
Even on a school committee from six to six forty-five.
That's what, that's what I did last time, I ran out, yeah, after I got yelled at, I ran out.
And everyone up against school committee too.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, you can only, you can only try.
Yep.
Next item on the agenda is a board leader's honor post, they won't have anything. Something blocked, got canceled, I don't know if they was, I, I was worried it was last night, but I don't think so. But we're, continue to work on that.
Board is waiting this weekend, I don't know.
I, I have something to, to offer. I spoke with Father Isaac at, at the brewery this morning, it's not at the brewery, but I, but you remember Father Isaac from, from, from the brewery? Just because we met during the winter, we thought we'd put off some, you know, our, our second meeting on the subject of, of a tour, an open house for Spencer residents. And he said, as things are pretty busy right now, it sounds like they're trying to ramp up as, as in their original business plan. So I'll talk to him again in a month, but I thought, I, I detected that, I think on our last meeting, sort of left him maybe a bit sobered about some of the, you know, some of the logistical issues. So I, I'd be happy to, you know, take comments from board members or maybe one other board member like to, you know, like, like to join me in a, in a meeting, and we, and I can, you know, precede any meeting later in July, in June with some, with some rather, with some suggestions of, about some, some key decisions that can be made about organizing that. So, but let's, just let you know, it's still on, on the table, and I basically don't very much want to do it. I think we, I, I just want to, we, just introduce some of the realities of issues involved, but that the hardest, the hardest still there.
That's an idea.
Okay. I just also, as I said to Adam this morning, it's, it's, it's been kind of a, been a lot of doubters lately. There's a point of pride for a lot of people to have me, and, and so the new, uh, you know, it's, it's the new attention the town is getting. And, and I think it would be a boost for people to see it, it would be a real, a real positive, a real feel-good moment for the town.
We do, I mentioned, well, Spencer's literally back on the map.
There's a pipeline of the construction there.
Well, Spencer's literally back on the map, we're on the beer path, uh, uh, I saw the, they, uh, they're establishing, is that? I'll pursue that. Great, great. Anything else? Uh, anyone that'd come forward for a second shot, this is input. Both are, no. Can you give off your name and address for the record, please?
I did.
Oh, you did, sir?
Just, just a couple of things. One quick one minute. The opt-out program for the health insurance, now is that paid in a lump sum or over fifty-two weeks in every pay period?
I forget if we did a quarterly, I can't remember.
I know where we're at, every pay period.
Yeah.
For so much over the year. All right, now the thing is, these public meetings, you're talking public hearings, why people don't show up? Would you want to come to a meeting where a board member insults you, if you're a taxpayer, you didn't vote for it? It's only two hundred and fifty dollars? Or have a, another member, like was at the finance committee, point his finger at the camera and tell the people, it's your fault. See, that's why we're not getting nothing done. And being, why would I go to the finance committee meeting and get my finger in my face from some board member?
Yeah.
And the same thing happened last, uh, school committee meeting. There was a big thing by one of the members about it, it was only two hundred and fifty dollars, and why wouldn't I go speak there?
Yep. I can only say that I hope that we've, we've established the, the column that we've, we've established and continuing, that we never took that to, to, we've never, we've never taken adversarial, uh.
No, this is what I have, and I just, I'm, I'm here, and I, it goes every day, every week.
So I'd hope that something that wouldn't get, and that's why I offered office hours too, in case somebody didn't want to go in front of a board on camera. You know, we're just trying to get, draw people in any, any way we can.
Which we're saying, why would we, some places be chastised or insulted?
And nobody likes that, Al. I think what our object of goodness is, is how do we promote and put enough information out? And, and that's what I said, even a phone line, come make this people talk on the phone easier than they, or email.
The whole reason for our public information sessions is to get feedback from the public, right? On public, we think of them.
Right. In this town, historically, it's been a high item, they all show up.
Right, that's, I think that's what happens.
It's not a high item.
Right.
It's, it's a strike that, uh, the core, you know, they don't show up.
And that's what happened at that last meeting, it was, struck a nerve because we had the override. It was at that point, the override was a reality.
Right.
And the questions had already been established, and then we provided information on, on before that. It was just, how, how, you know, what, what, how do we, how do we staff the fire department? And how do we staff the police department? And what do we do, and what do we not do, and how many people in the town clerk's office? And what permits are the issue and all that, and that's, you know, until people, I think, are going to lose something that they want, whether it's, you know, when the, when the service is on the line, like, you know, when seniors came out, when we talked about seniors, and they came out, they had, they, you know, they had something they had to talk about. When people, people worried about the money in their pocket, they came out and had, you know, in business about the override. So I think that's, you're right, when it strikes them, it's the same thing with town meetings. Usually average a hundred and five people, leave a hundred, usually have a hundred and five people at a normal town meeting.
Yep.
Except when there's controversy, then we get two fifty.
Right.
And again, eight thousand registered voters.
Town's override missed forty, forty-four, forty-five votes. And, what, six thousand, seven thousand people didn't show up to vote. But in that same token, the schools risked by half, is that, you know, two to one. All right, I think.
All right, I'll take it. But to, to your point though, Al, one thing, a public official, no matter what their personal feelings might be, can never be dismissive of, of people, the point of view in, in the values of people's place, you know, on, on the vote.
Who you know? You know, when somebody's running for office, whether it's state rep, federal, town, they promise you everything, and, but when it comes time to their vote, they go their way, they don't vote what the good secrets want anymore. You look at the politicians in Washington, they're not voting what the people want, they're voting what they want. The same thing in our state legislature.
They have to keep your.
We've got a one-party system, and they only vote, and we've got a, a rep that only votes what the senate tells her to do. So I'm just hoping things change eventually. I think so.
I saw you end up, Carl.
Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Looking good, Charles, feeling well?
Kowski, Kowski, one thirteen, that arose. Uh, years ago, the, when the selectmen would come out, have the people come out and vote, they'd ask for rides. Well, why, why can't the board somehow call the people if they need a ride? Why don't, why don't, uh, say, the come out and vote? Have people ask if they need rides?
Maybe include that in our reverse now, when we do every year.
Again, I mean, the staff, it's, it's.
I don't know, you know, it's just.
Or, or we could, we could then, at that point, use public cable or whatever that's supposed to advertise that we need volunteers to do it.
Yeah, volunteers, I think we need to be volunteers.
I mean, at least we'd offer it up to volunteers to help us out with that, if, you know, if we have a list of people who need rides. Like, I know Carl, you'll drive anyone around to, uh, to vote, right? That's a great idea, that's a great idea. I mean, I know, I know where my father lived, the, the, you know, the, maybe it seems like discussing, getting together as a group and going to polls, uh, to vote and, you know, facilitate rides for everybody.
It is amazing, but you were right, because the weather plays a role.
Right behind his coffee.
This way.
Different audience, thank you for that, I appreciate it.
I'm sure we'll be back.
Oh, we need this copy of your driver's license?
Extra liability insurance.
They still are small, uh, core people who will not vote for the override in town. I know how big it is, but people I've talked to says they will not vote for the override, any override.
You remember what's on it?
Yeah, what costs.
Well, I mean, you know, we, 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 you know, stayed our case, and now the voters spoke, so.
I understand.
And we just got to live, live with that, with that situation now and in the future. But we'll still, we'll, you know, we'll state the case again, because, you know, we don't do.
Doing what we do.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Just to give the information out to the voters, you know, and let them make the choice.
Now, what is this, uh, status of, uh, yeah, can't, the building, uh.
Sudin's block.
Sudin block.
The Sudin block, we're in a situation now where we've, we've, we've had our public hearings, we've heard from the public the pluses and minuses of the building, you know, suggestions on what to do with it. We've, we've discussed uses. Now we've, we've taken a standard RFP, and the committee's crafting RFP with some special verbiage in it, and we will release that for, it's very close, very close. We wanted to stay away, the committee wanted to stay away from the, the town meeting, the elections that were occurring. We've got another meeting to, uh, early in June, and I anticipate we'll have the, we'll have the RFP ready soon after that.
So you put it, uh, relative, opposite, uh, like, can I, Kelly Zdowski or somebody like that?
I have to ask you if that. Now, the, the, according to the procurement statute, municipal buildings can't be sold that way.
Oh.
We have to sell it to the process of what Tony's called an RFP, request for proposals. So we establish a committee, the committee analyzes the building, analyzes, like, gets feedback from the public, what we'd like to see happen. You draft a, uh, request for a proposal, you advertise it, and then people have to submit essentially bids, proposals, uh, price and non-price. They have to demonstrate that they're qualified, they have financial backing, they have done redevelopment projects before, they have a plan that's consistent with what the developers of the RFP would like to see happen in the building, and also they have price as well. But it's not as simple as, let's go put a remix on on the side.
Yeah, and the board will get an opportunity to see, see what, you know, that RFP is comprised of as well.
What about Pleasant Street School?
That's another one that, that we could, I think, I think we should see where, where Sudin block goes. And I think, you know, there's the potential for several buildings.
I think when you look at the properties in town between Cherry Street and Pleasant Street, those buildings have passed the point of saving them. So I think our focus is on Sudin block, because that is an opportunity, uh, for a reuse project, but with the existing facility that's there. And once we go through that process, then again, we'll have to go through another committee process of, uh, if we decide to, uh, sell the land, uh, with, with or without tearing the buildings down. Um, we've all had serious restrictions to develop.
Pleasant Street, uh, it's been vacant so long, it's beyond repair. It's, I think, if you want to take a look in there, I'd go out and take you down there and show you.
Cherry, Cherry Street.
The best thing to do with that would be to have that big wall come down and flatten it, you know?
No, if it's that bad, how come the firemen practice in there?
Because we have a lot of bad buildings that could absolutely get on fire.
Certain things like that, I mean, I'm taught taught dollar-wise to fix it, to be repaired, okay?
Yeah.
Because you don't have any access, accessibility, because the minute you go in, you have to go up the stairs to get to the first floor. Okay, so it's not good for any kind of, anything to do with people, because you have to do an access, you know, elevator or something, or a back.
All the mechanicals are long shot.
And that's what it is.
I mean, it's, it's structurally sound that they can go in there and they can do certain things, but, you know, it's not, it's not rehabilitable. It, it's cost prohibitive to actually reinvest money into fixing up the building and then generating revenue from it.
The only thing we can really say is that we're, we're concentrating on something right now, and we're going to try to put that. We're going to try to put that to bed and move forward. Everything's on the hit list right now, it's just a matter of prioritizing. Thank you, Al.
I just want to add one point to that. Same thing with Sudman Block and these buildings. When we, people say, "Oh, you have trouble with your operating budget, you need to ask for these overrides, why don't you sell them to the owners"? Well, under, according to the statute, we can't take that money and then apply it to budget. It's got to go back into capital repairs at other buildings. Or we have a capital stabilization account, if we make the sale proceeds from that, except to the library, I think those funds go actually to the library. Trustees would then administer those funds. But, you know, sale of Pleasant Street or Cherry Street, if we sold those, that fund would go into a capital account, and then we could use it for, I mean, other building projects. It's not something that we can say, "Okay, we can, you know, replace the highway worker that we eliminated with that one".
That's not even an option for us. Definitely to be around that.
Right, and again, one-time funds, and I'm not going to fund multiple budgets, you know. It's bad, that's bad for, so...
Well, thank you, I didn't know that either.
There's all kinds of little rules, Carl. Well, we'll keep you apprised out there. Thanks, Carl. All right, any board member or staff comments?
Just four. The Fire and Ed's building. A person in town donated all the tile to put in the hallway in the bathroom. I don't know if he wants his name used, but I'm not going to use it. But a person in town had done donations before, he donated all the tile and one of the guys was putting it in today.
Excellent.
Just to let you know when that happened.
I know they're using that building, I still have to have some kind of public recognition.
No, we're not using it yet.
Okay.
Now, since the classroom was done, that's it. This is the first thing since the classroom was done.
Okay, well, I mean, when that finishes, I still have to...
Yep.
We'll bring something. I'd just like to say...
Advertising is a public hearing, a public hearing.
I'd just like to say it was a good turnout on Memorial Day. Thank the board for showing up. We had a good day, the weather helped, we made the walk. John did it without crunches this year, his speed increased dramatically.
I almost lost the administrator in the middle of over... That's why we need the roads project, so...
But it was a good turnout.
And you did a great job, Gary, with your speech.
Thank you, Mr. Petey.
I had to mention, you know, on the theme of trying to do some other positive things, Brenda's helping me out, I'm trying to reach out to the agricultural association. I'd really like to look at making the fair grounds a multi-use type of facility. And I think a quick idea to look at is, and we can get the agricultural association involved as speaking of a farmer's market, and maybe every spring can have it the first Saturday of the month or second Saturday of the month, and look to do something like that with the facilities. And I've reached out to the agricultural association. If you don't get an answer from them soon, I'll call them when they come and ask us for the traffic change on the fair. But I'd like to see if they'd be willing to help us look at that as an opportunity to use something and create another event in town.
I think you're right, Tony. I think that's a perfect place for it, I think, you know, getting the people involved in that, work in a way that, you know, they could run it along.
Once we can establish something up there, then a myriad of other ideas that come from people like Mike Toomey. We start looking at those. We've got to see that as a viable, organize and use that property correctly.
I think it's great, I just think there's another situation where it takes people to be involved. And that seems to be a lack around a lot of places. My hat's off to you, Tony, I think it's good stuff.
Appreciate it, thank you. Any other comments, any other staff comments? Okay, well, if we have nothing else, I'll take a motion. Motion to adjourn, do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so our next meeting is June 9th. That'll be a regular business meeting.
For three months.
Here, here at McCord's Alcohol at 6:00 P.M. All right, thank you very much, have a good night.